Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, October 29. We have just returned from executive session into public session. We will call the meeting to order. Our first order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those watching at home, there are two flags in studio. Often, there's one behind this chair, but there's two on that side now, so nice pivot. Moving on to item number five, the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number six would be if we had anyone for public comment, either in studio or on Zoom. Okay, looking like we have neither. We'll move on from, we don't have a motion for a consent agenda. Before we get to eight, I would, maybe we'd like to hear from our youth advisors. I'm sorry, would you mind just introducing yourself?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm Maya, I'm a student rep, I'm a junior.
And I'm all, I'm also a junior.
Thank you.
Starting off, talking about our academics, it's worthwhile to mention that term one ends on Friday, November 8th, and it's kind of insane how fast the term has went, but also like amazing because everything's been very smooth sailing so far.
And then the Wakefield Warrior Marching Band finished off an undefeated regular season after their win on Saturday night at Landry Field, and on Sunday they received a perfect score and a gold medal at state finals.
Tournament time is right around the corner for girls volleyball. They have qualified for state tournaments and will begin their matches this week, as well as boys soccer will be likely on top three seed in their tournament after finishing the two regular season games this week, which was Monday and Wednesday. And girls soccer looks to be qualified for this tournament as well, but they have to wait for the official bracket release.
Girls swim also had six members qualify for sectionals and states, which will take place at MIT on November 3rd and Boston University on November 10th.
Now that fall sports are slowly coming to an end, winter sports registration is now open and can be accessed through the school athletic website, and all winter sports will begin on Monday, December 2nd.
Other school news that's not sports related is Fright Night is celebrating the 20th anniversary of their event.
And then something very important, we held our first Alice drill where everything went well, basically teachers were instructed to remain in a calm scenario and Ms. McLeod, right? Ms. McLeod or Ms. Traficante, I think it was Ms. McLeod, us basically said on the announcements, there's an intruder, kind of like said like characteristics, and students were advised to go somewhere safe, whether that be evacuating or go in a small sanction of space. I know for my physics class, we went in a small confined area that was safe, but everyone took it very seriously and it was very efficient.
And Spirit Week is happening this week, tomorrow's Anything But a Backpack Day, which is where students bring basically anything, like another plastic bag or something they want to bring to school.
Or even like a suitcase.
So we're excited to see what people come up with because every year it's something different.
Yeah, and that's all we have to say.
Brilliant, thank you so much. Are there any questions for our youth advisors?
Just real quickly, have you done Alice before or was your first time using that model?
So we have done like a sort of like Alice training, but that was like our first time, like I feel like we did more advanced preparations when we were like elementary school, not so much at the Galvin, and this was our first year at the high school, like really like practicing what to do in this situation, and I think it was very beneficial because before I think we would just speak on it, but we would never actually like say like what would we actually do in a real life scenario, so yeah, I think it was.
And then people were, they had the option to evacuate this time if they thought, even like with the construction.
Yeah, yeah, especially with the construction of the high school, it's like difficult because, for example, the English, the evacuation points aren't the same because of the construction, and it's just dangerous to enter those points, so where to go in case of that because it's another obstacle to take into account for.
Thank you, yes, Karis, it's a great program. I'm a trainer at my institution, it's very different than some others that maybe people have done, so I'm glad that you thought it was effective, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to budget items, I see we have some gifts.
We have two gifts tonight to accept. The first one is from the Walton PTO, we have a motion?
Yeah, move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,000 for the Walton PTO, for the Walton School teachers to purchase supplies for the classroom. Second.
Motion's being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? That is unanimous, and thank you to the PTO, that's very generous.
The second gift tonight is from Franklin Sports, it's a $1,000 gift card for the athletic department to use for district-wide purchases.
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a $1,000 gift card from Franklin Sports to be used by the athletic department for district-wide supplies. Second.
Motion's being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? And that is unanimous, great. Anything else business related? No, thank you, Christine. Moving on to item number nine, superintendent remarks, reports.
Thank you so much. In terms of just comments and updates, just quick around some updates, so our students covered fall sports beautifully, we will be finding out the brackets for postseason play, they come out Thursday, if there's any holdup, they should be out by Friday, which I know a number of teams are waiting for to see who they get to play and who will be continuing on, so it's an exciting time of year, so that's very positive. All of our, all of our schools are working through drills right now, and so both elementary, middle, and high are all working through kind of different scenarios in which they are simulating and evacuating their campuses, so it's, it's something that is, something that we've been working on for a while, and we're pleased that we're kind of progressing in the calendar in regard to safety and drilling in that area. And that, just to know that our Alice drills and our evacuation drills are not taking the place of the regular drills that we have in regard to our standard fire drills and things like that, so that's just a quick update on safety and a little bit of more information around brackets. I want to give a very quick update in, around construction, and so we have some slides, and Tim is with us, Tim, you want to come on up to the table? So Tim is really the expert around this as our director of facilities, and we were talking earlier about just giving the committee just a very quick update and also maybe kind of inviting, kind of providing an invitation, but I'll let you take it over.
Sure, I committed to 60 seconds, that's why I've got my coat on. So I just want to show you, this first slide here is kind of the timeline of the entire project.
Site work that's happening, as you can see out of nine steps, we've already made it to step three, things are progressing very quickly, we're at structural steel, if you could switch over to the next slide, we've got a list of.
Tim, there's a clicker.
Oh. We've got a list of things that are ongoing construction activities right now, sort of when you look at the site as you're driving by or if you're looking out the window of the school, you might not know exactly what's going on, so to give you a few completion updates, Burnett Field has been completed and turned over. We are looking to complete the upper parking lot on November 8th, that will be turned over to student parking on November 12th, that's gone from 82 to 122 spots, that will be a huge relief for parking on site here at the school. They're continuing to, to install exterior underground utilities, underslab utilities, so we're seeing a lot of things coming in one way, going out another, doing all that prep work, and of course, the, the major update is the structural steel, that started on October 21st, we took our first deliveries, and if you take a look out back, I've got a slide there, that's seven days worth of structural steel, I've never seen anything like it, it's just been completely amazing to watch, and we're looking to have a topping off ceremony at or around winter break. So those are kind of the happenings around the site right now, I also have a picture of the Burnett Field, which looks beautiful, the only thing that's not in, in place right now are the bases, the scoreboard, and the lighting that's coming in, we're actually doing a full musco lighting on this field, so it is put back much better than it, than it existed before, which was the, which was the idea, and we're thrilled about how it came out. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that grass or is that turf?
That is, you can see the rolls, it's not, it's grass.
Sod.
It's sod, yeah, so.
Looks like turf.
Yeah. Yeah, so for a few days, we, we had it, you know, it was being watered 24/7, so you know, folks might have thought we were wasting some water, but that was, that was for a purpose, and, and everything's, everything's coming together well.
The remaining pieces that you, that you asked, that you, that you just mentioned, the scoreboard lights, what's the schedule for that, is that like a spring thing?
Yeah, so the, the field will be available to be played in its complete condition for the springtime.
So those things won't go up before the snow flies, it'll go up in the.
It'll, it'll, the work will continue through snow, they'll get it done to turn it over for the spring.
Good, that's great, looks terrific.
So the change to add lights to the field was, was kind of a, a change, and a change in the original kind of process, and so the reason the field was done over is because there was a culvert that cut right through the outfield, and instead of just replacing that section, they, they laser graded and did the whole field over, and when they did that, they put in irrigation, am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
They put in irrigation and, and before they put down the sod, and it's, yeah, they're really upgrading everything that's there.
Yeah, it's going to make the maintenance of the field much easier, it's going to, you know, the quality of the grass is going to be much better, it's going to be a much better field to play come spring.
I also think that the lights, the change now with the lights is also going to take pressure off of vets because, you know, vets got just a ton of use because of the lights. Now we're going to have another lighted softball field.
It's a game changer.
It's a game changer, so we're really pleased about this.
Sure, and the other thing that Doug and I have spoken about, and we'd like to invite you all to come and do a sidewalk, if you would be interested, if you could all maybe come to an agreement on a date that you'd like to come and let us know, I'll coordinate with Bond, and we'll get everybody a hard hat and some vests, and we'll get out and walk around, you'll get a feel for the shape of the building, where things will lay out, we can ask questions of some of the folks who are working on, on the site, if you're interested, we'd love to have you. Can we climb up on the beams?
Sign the way.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yes. Tim, can you share a little bit more about the upper lot?
The upper lot, yeah, so as I said before, November 8th is the completion date, they've got a binder coat down on the parking lot right now, what they're working on is some of the medians and how things are going to be laid out, I worked with Joe Mulaney from the high school on a numbering scheme for the parking so that the spots can be assigned appropriately, and Monday, I think it's, is it Monday or Tuesday the 12th? Is that a long weekend?
It's Tuesday because it's the holiday.
Yeah, so the Tuesday the 12th, the, the lot will be completely open and available to students for parking, and we're hoping that that'll take some of that traffic that we see on, on Farm Street, you know, some of those folks who are parking on Upper Farm Street will be able to use that lot and kind of ease some of the parking tensions we've had on site so far this year.
What sounded like you're adding 42 new spots?
Correct, four, yeah, 40 additional spots.
But you're closing the, the Bond lot that people have been able to use, how many spots are they losing?
15.
15, okay.
Because we're getting to a point in the project now where Bond needs to be able to park their staff there, so we're also going to be parking some construction folks over in the, in the town pit as well, so they're, they're making some, you know, lot space for themselves over there, and so we're, we're using every square inch of available land that exists in the neighborhood. Once we move into the, the enveloping stage, we're going to start picking up on the number of tradespeople on site. Absolutely. Yeah, like exponentially, yeah. Yeah, so like, as I was saying, you know, the structural steel portion should end prior to, to winter break, and then we'll start the, the envelope stage, so things are going to, as you can see, the way the site has changed over the past seven days, it's just going to be amazing to see how the, how the building shapes out, and you can kind of see that in this photo, I'm sorry, let me back it up, where the, where the foundation is, you get to see sort of the shape of the building and how things are, are going to shape out. Great.
In the upper lot, is there any like fence that will be there at the edge where you're like backing some of those spots?
You're talking at the, at the top of the retaining wall?
Yeah, I was looking at that, and I was thinking like, these are our best drivers we have in town, and I can imagine one of them going flying off the back of it.
So you'll see there now, there's about a, it's either a six or an eight foot temporary fence, but what has come, come through, there was originally supposed to be a smaller wooden portion, but they've changed that to a, an eight foot metal fence, so you will see an eight foot chain link metal fence on top of that retaining wall for safety.
And that will be in effect on the 12th or after the?
You'll have the temporary fence on, on the 12th, but it, in a short timeframe, you'll see that permanent fence go up.
Yeah, I saw the temporary one, and I'm like, I'm not sure that's picking up.
Yeah, and you know, all the regulate, you know, it was, everything was done by regulation, but kind of was discussed in the project working group that we'd like it to be, you know, additional to that, so it was something that was worked out through the project.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you too.
Appreciate it. So Tim and I were also talking about inviting in our project management, Left Field, to come in and talk about the construction in the event that you can't make it to the site to walk the site, and so there'll be another update here coming.
Just to go back to sort of the Alice drill piece, I do appreciate that knowing that the sort of the status of sort of the campus has changed like through this project, I appreciate sort of drill, you know, and, and addressing some of those, those pain points, so.
Yeah.
It's good.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to turn it over to Kara, Kara's worked really hard with her curriculum team and kind of putting together a summary of our MCAS review.
Yeah, so Ian, I don't know, so everyone's on Zoom other than me, is it, is it possible to see the people on that? Okay, so we will, and then we'll do the PowerPoint.
We'll put the PowerPoint there, and we'll put them there.
Great.
It's all good news.
Thank you so much. Okay, all right, so we got you the, oh, here, here's everyone, all right, we'll jump into introduction in a moment. So we got all of you the presentation ahead of time, this is always a kind of a challenging presentation to put together because there's so much information. In the past, we've kind of done a combination of sharing our results plus our action plans, but given the presentations that have already taken place this year, our principals came in, talked about their school improvement plans, Doug and I presented district goals last time, I think you're, you're well informed of kind of what we're doing and where we're going, which of course, MCAS results play a role in making those decisions, so tonight we just thought we would dig into just MCAS-specific information, and the way we structured it, we thought we would hold for questions until the end, if that works for all of you, or if you, if you have something like a clarifying point in between, please feel free, but yeah, so we'll work, work our way through by content area, but first I'd like to start with introductions. I have Margaret Messier here, our 5-12 ELA coordinator, I think you might know everybody by now, but actually, can you just say hi in case people are watching at home?
Hi, everyone, I'm Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret. Erin Bailey, our 5-12 math coordinator.
Good evening, everybody.
Valerie Drynan, our elementary humanities curriculum coordinator.
Hi, everyone.
And Joanne Marks, our 5-12 science curriculum coordinator.
Good evening, everyone.
And Marguerite Augenbrunn, our elementary STEM curriculum coordinator.
Hi, everyone.
Okay, all right, so this, this slide we just wanted to include in here, just to share a lot of what we've talked about, just the changing demographics in, in Wakefield, this just gives a 10-year, about a 10-year span to show the differences in our community, and how everything that we do, we're trying to be responsive to all of the students within our district and the changing demographics. We've talked a lot about high-quality instructional materials, we've done our, our math review, recently our ELA review, and we're in the middle of our science curriculum review right now, and high-quality instructional materials, trying to find those are a huge component of that review, and the idea is, you know, coming back to MCAS, it's a standards-based test that we as a district adopt high-quality instructional materials that are not only standards-lined, but also meet the diverse needs of the students in front of us, and I think everyone in Wakefield can see that that population is changing, and we want to be as responsive, responsive as possible. So we will go into a couple of different slides, I'm going to pass this one over to Val and Marguerite, just to talk about, set the stage for the review of the data around the accountability ratings.
All right, thanks Kara, so I know we've talked about the accountability ratings in the past, and so we just kind of wanted to simplify, the, the idea behind accountability ratings are each school has a target that is set for them using a variety of factors, so there's targets for academic achievement, targets for growth, absenteeism, et cetera, and as you can see here on this chart, all of our schools have made progress toward their targets to a variety of degrees, so we're just going to highlight something for each school that we pulled from each accountability report, because there are different highlights in different places, and you'll see there in the, in the right-hand column, the progress toward targets, so I'm going to pass it to Marguerite to talk about the elementary highlights.
So one of the highlights from Dolberg is that they had strong scores for both achievement and growth targets, and the lowest performing students group did better overall in progress towards ELA achievement and math growth, sorry, better than the overall group of all students. At Greenwood, one of their highlights is that the lowest performing student group earned three of four possible points for math achievement for the second year in a row, so there are four possible points towards their accountability targets in math achievement, meaning that that group of students, the lowest performing group of students, is making progress towards their target. At Walton, ELA and math both earned typical growth high, and the average ELA achievement for the lowest performing and high-needs groups of students increased despite really high achievement scores in 2023, a strong cohort, and at Woodville, they maintained the average achievement scores and the 2024 average achievement scores at Woodville were the highest across the district.
And then at Galvin, and Margaret's going to go into more detail on this later, so I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it right now, the ELA achievement improved in both achievement and growth, so we went from zero points in target last year to two points this year out of four, and then two to three for growth targets, and there's more, more details about that coming later in the presentation, and then for the high school, we improved our target for chronic absenteeism. So Kara, I think we're handing it back to you now.
Okay, all right, so I'm just going to, Doug, I didn't know if you wanted to take this slide, just to take the glory.
Sure, no, we'd like to congratulate the Dolberg School for achieving a level of, of school recognition for their outstanding achievement and high growth, it's really, it's, it's an amazing award or an amazing recognition, very few schools in the state have gotten it, this is the second year in a row that one of our elementary schools was recognized, I think the, the teachers and the leadership at Dolberg, including our curriculum group, have really did a great job supporting this work, and all the credit goes to them.
That was a really exciting recognition this year, for sure. All right, so we're going to jump into, we're just, like I said, we're going to go content, content by content, we'll start with math and just give overviews, but if you have more specific questions, feel free at the end to just ask us, so I'm going to pass this over to Marguerite.
All right, hello, everyone, like Kara said, we're going to start with math and the, I'm going to give you kind of context for this slide, Kara, I can't see the slides, are we on the math performance slide?
We are, yes.
Okay, perfect, so I'm going to explain what's on this slide, because you're going to see very similar slides for both, for math literacy and science, we structure the slides in a similar way, so looking at this slide, we have at the top grades three to eight and the bottom grade 10, and on the left, you see Wakefield performance, and on the right, we have the state. So the bars, the different bars, so the different categories of blue is students, the percentage of students exceeding expectations, green is the percentage of students meeting expectations, orange is the percent of students partially meeting expectations, and red is the percentage of students not meeting expectations, so what we want to see is strong MCAS results would mean that these bars are shifting to the left over time, and comparing Wakefield to the state, we're looking to see more students in the blue and green, fewer students in the red, and in both graphs, we do have a higher percentage of students in math meeting or exceeding expectations than the state, and we also have a lower percentage of students not meeting expectations. Another highlight here is that we have a 15-point difference between Wakefield and the state in both third and fourth grades in terms of the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. I'll hand it over to Erin.
Thank you, so on the next slide, we're going to look at some cohort tracking, so looking at the same group of students over time, we're looking at the last handful of MCAS exams since 2021, just a couple of notes about this chart, each color represents a cohort of students, because they don't take it in grade nine, that's why you see towards the bottom a shift, it doesn't look as pretty because you don't get that nice staircase, but you can see the color coordination for the same group of kids being tracked over time, these numbers represent the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations, the bold number is Wakefield, and then in the parentheses is compared to the state this year. There's another note on there that says in 2021, most students except for grade 10 took a partial MCAS, because that was our first year back after the COVID pandemic first hit. Some highlights here, the cohort of 2024 fourth graders, there was an increase in the percentage of meeting or exceeding in the following subgroups, low-income, high-needs, and African-American and black students. In the middle school, the eighth grade was a particular highlight, they had the greatest percentage of meeting and exceeding at the secondary level, and they also had the greatest differential compared to the state, which was pretty exciting, so shout out to our eighth grade team. And then in terms of the 10th grade performance, we were really excited to see that the same group of kids that took it in the eighth grade, and then in 10th grade saw a 16% improvement in their meeting and exceeding for the MCAS in the spring, so we can take a minute and feel free to look at all the different cohorts and process that information, because I know it's a lot.
Any questions on this before? Yeah, go ahead, I thought this one might have questions.
Okay.
I broke our protocol, I'm sorry.
Seeing as you asked, I'm curious, when you look at this, you, one thing that quickly jumps out is that it seems like there is a dip in MCAS for students in fifth grade, and you don't necessarily see that anywhere else, and I'm wondering, what, what points do you sort of glean from that, because it seems consistent, so aside from that they moved to the Galvin, what, what else do we think might be driving that?
Great question, and you know, part of what we'll look at on this slide and the next slide, which highlights the SGP or the student growth percentile, is that fifth grade is kind of a rough patch for us right now, and I think the nice part about looking at this data is that it really. And I think the nice part about looking at this data is that it really highlights that and allows us to enter into conversations with our fifth-grade team, our curriculum coordinators, and our leaders, as well as look at the leap from fourth to fifth. I think part of it is just a transitionary phase from the elementary to the middle. But with that phase comes a change in schedule where the elementary curriculum really grows through grade five, and that's pretty typical in a lot of places. And so the prescribed amount of time is an hour. In the past, at the middle school, we've only had about 49 minutes for classes. And so something, an adjustment that we made this year, knowing that this is kind of a historical problem at this point, is we have put fifth-grade classes back-to-back. So right now, we have math and science are taught back-to-back. And instead of having like two 49, 50-minute periods separately, it's one big block where they can do 100 minutes of instruction, 60 for math and 40 for science. And then the same thing with ELA and social studies, doing an hour for ELA and 40 minutes for social studies. So we're trying to kind of model the elementary timeframe where they do have a little bit more time in math, to increase time on learning for math, to curb this. And we'll see what happens when we get our data from next year. But there are other conversations happening around, you know, being curious about what's happening here, seeing that dip because it is something that we've noticed. And I was just bringing it up with my PLS yesterday.
Interesting. Okay, I'll hold anything else maybe till later. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on. Sorry, I wasn't quick enough with my slide. Erin, you're on the next slide, too. Yep.
Yes, so this slide is talking about student growth. When we talk about student growth percentile, the state's definition is that it's calculated for any student who takes MCAS two years in a row. The number is calculated by placing students in achievement-alike groups based on last year's MCAS scores, and then tracking their growth compared to similarly achieving peers in the next year. The state norms growth to 50. And what that means is the average growth for achievement-alike groups across the state is 50. Low growth is considered below 40. Normal growth is 40 to 59, and high growth is above 60. So when you look at this, some highlights that I wanted to point out, nearly all grade levels are demonstrating average-to-high-average growth, even in our high-needs populations. The eighth grade has the biggest increase in growth from last year among all students. The seventh grade had the greatest increase in growth among high-need students. And we saw an increase SGP in high-needs for upper-house students, which I was wondering if that would be indicative of the efforts we've put into when at the middle school as an intervention block because you can see that in our seventh and eighth-grade students the most.
All right, thank you, Erin. We'll jump right into ELA then, on the next slide. Oh, Val, you're muted.
It would help if I unmuted, huh? Thank you, guys. So for ELA, we're gonna follow the same flow of information, so I'm not gonna re-explain the charts. But just wanted to highlight here, again, Wakefield's on the left, the state is on the right, and that our performance in Wakefield is still higher than the state. And in ELA, we also did increase the differential between Wakefield and the state, as was shared about math as well. Another highlight for ELA was that there was significant improvement in our writing development scores from the cohort between grade seven and 10. So they were scoring an average of 27.5% in seventh grade and have grown to 48% in 10th grade. We're gonna move to the next slide. And so for the cohort tracking in ELA, same graph, you know, the bolded is Wakefield, not the parentheses is the state. And one highlight here was that despite fourth grade and the state performing, like across the state and in Wakefield performing on the lower end, our Wakefield cohort of fourth graders, which were our 2023 third graders, increased the percent of students meeting or exceeding in every subgroup. So that was a positive despite the more challenging scores in fourth grade, both across Wakefield and the state this year. And then there was 10 points of growth in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in the cohort between seventh to 10th grade. So same cohort we were talking about in writing on the previous slide. In elementary, one thing, so we have seen the increased writing growth in the upper grades, and that is an area that we are looking at in elementary now as well. So Margaret and I are doing some collaboration around that. And I'm actually gonna pass it over to Margaret because the next highlight has to do with the growth highlights for both elementary and middle. Margaret, you can take it over from here.
Sure, so something I know we're extremely proud of is that we got typical growth high for all of our students, grades three through eight, and in almost every single one of our subgroups for grades three through eight. So that's huge for us, and I think we've made a lot of shifts over the past year, four years, five years. In five-to-eight ELA, in the past two years, I know we've made a lot of shifts in three and four as well. So I think that that is something that we're really excited about. Something else I just want to emphasize, too, is in 2020 was the pandemic, right? That hybrid year. In 2021, we kind of really shifted to a focus on writing because that was an area that we were way lower than we should have been compared to the state. And when we look at grades five through eight, where that's been the focus, we've made huge growth in the area of writing in grades five through eight since 2021. And that's a testament to the teachers' flexibility in shifting curriculum and getting trained in a writing process and a number of other things. So I think, obviously, we have room for growth, but we went in 2021 in grades five through eight to performing below the state, two in 2024 in writing development, performing significantly above the state. So that's something that I know the teachers should be celebrated for, as well as the students. And I think incorporating that writing process has been something that's been huge for us. And then the next slide is really just to back up what we're talking about. This is our accountability report for the state, where you can see in grades three through eight, in almost all of our subgroups, as well as all students, we've achieved typical growth high in ELA since the shifts that we've made.
Great, thanks, Margaret. All right, we're gonna shift over to Joanne.
All right, so it's my turn. So things are, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out. You've heard tonight, I think, like some, we're all presenting very similar slides and outline slides to give you the overview of how MCAS are. But I think you can probably hear in the commentary and in the context in which we're speaking that this is work that we really dig into, right? We, it's public data, but we also internally work together. We sort through lots of different subgroup data, subgroup data over years. And we work with our teachers with this, too. So while it's a nice chance tonight to give you an overview, I guess I wanted you to know that this is, we are regularly using this data to inform our next steps and our work and our growth that's needed. And then on to science. So in science, as many of you know, we don't have a science and MCAS every year. So there are three years where students are tested for the science MCAS. They're tested in grade five, they're tested in grade eight, and then they're tested again in high school. At Wakefield, most of our students take that first MCAS in ninth grade. So on this slide right here, we're looking at the same chart you've seen, but for grade five science and for grade eight science. And when I say science, it's also technology and engineering. Our standards include technology and engineering standards. And what's, what you can't see here, you know, we are consistently, in this picture, performing better than the state. And when we look at this data year over year, it is a consistent performance better than the state. So that's something to be proud of, for sure. If we, digging into that data, some particular strengths in grade five, our students have been doing very well, particularly in the life science topics. There's different domains within the science MCAS, and the grade five has really shown some strength in the life science topics. And then in the grade eight test, it really was actually, when you look at the different subgroups, the subtopics, the domains, it was really consistent performance, which is great to see as well. All right, next slide, please. And then this is our high school test. So currently, students are taking the MCAS after their ninth-grade bio course. There are some exceptions to that. There are actually two high-school science MCAS that students could take. It doesn't matter, as far as the state goes, which ones they take. So most of our students take biology, but there's also an option to take the physics MCAS. And so we have some groups of students who will be taking that this year, as well as sometimes students come in from other districts as juniors or seniors, and it makes more sense for them to take physics than to take physics MCAS. But at this point, what they look at is the, kind of by grade 10, how students have done on their science MCAS. And again, you'll see that we're doing consistently well across the state, and this is true over time. Also, you can't see in this particular graph, but our students with disabilities, that subgroup over the last four years has been steadily improving, and that's a nice thing to see as well. A big tribute to our teachers that are working so hard to support all of our students. And then the last thing I wanted to point out was regarding, actually, if you could go back to that last graph one more time. Thank you. Is as far, there's actually a difference at the high school level with, we talk a lot about the meeting and exceeding expectations, but then there's a difference between that and what it takes to pass the MCAS as far as a graduation requirement. Just because it's so much in the news right now, for your information, a pass on the MCAS for a high-school student is any of the blue, green, or orange categories. So that's partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding expectations, all count as a pass. And for, in our situation here, that 2% of students then gets repeated opportunities over the next years to work on passing that test and for us to support them in that as well. So overall, we have a really great success rate as far as students meeting that science MCAS requirement. All right, next slide. Thank you. And this is a bit of what I already mentioned. You know, you can see the meets and exceeds expectations in black, and then the state's scores in gray for both all students and for high-needs students. In science, because they don't take the test every year, we're not able to get that nice, pretty rainbow graph where you get to track the cohorts. But we also, it's just a little bit simpler to look at. We also aren't able to get the student growth data. That's not available for science because it's not data that we have for students each year. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. And this slide here just kind of recaps everything we've talked about and then our areas of growth. Because while we tried to point out a lot of highlights tonight, too, we also wanted to emphasize that we know we have areas to grow. We're progressing every year. We're not necessarily where we want to be quite yet overall. So we highlighted some areas of growth for moving forward. The first one being decreasing the achievement gap between our students designated as high-needs and all students. We have noticed, in particular, parts of the district, achievement gap between our students with disabilities that's kind of sticking out to us in a way that's making us have conversations and look really closely at, again, what materials are we using? Are, especially for students who are substantially separate or not, don't have access to Gen Ed, making sure that we have aligned materials that are supporting our students to help close that gap. All of the work that we've done focused on high-quality materials, curriculum alignment, just trying to get everybody rowing in the same direction. That's been a huge push district-wide in all content areas with the idea that if we're all in agreement around our curriculum, everyone knows what's taught at this grade builds to the next grade and the next grade that, you know, there won't be unnecessary gaps created for students, that we can have some pretty nice guarantees there in terms of what to teach. We've talked a lot about this at many of our meetings, just trying to increase acceleration opportunities for students. We've talked about grading, looking at kind of the matchup of our students who may be getting high honors, honors on report cards, but not necessarily hitting that exceeds category. So trying to, again, create opportunities for students, not necessarily teaching to the test, but using the test to support our opportunities for students and creating goals for ourselves to take all of our students to the next level. Erin pointed out the highlights in grade eight. Seventh starts are opportunities for acceleration for students in math. We're trying to have conversations at Galvin, continuing to refine the win structure, possibly make it more targeted with additional acceleration opportunities in other grades. So there's been a huge push with scheduling just to get those opportunities in the schedule. So now we kind of see a next phase, really digging in on what's happening during those blocks. But that is definitely a goal for us to get that number up for students who are hitting exceeds expectation. And then overall, as a district, you know, our accountability report shares that we're making moderate progress towards our targets. I think when we compare ourselves to neighboring towns, we look at our DART districts that haven't been released yet this year. We would, we obviously have a goal to hit that next label, which is substantial target towards, substantial growth towards our targets, which would mean that we have improved achievement and growth across all of our content areas. So that is a goal for us. And then everyone talked about the comparison to the state. That's what we talked about, you know, in past presentations as well. I think, you know, we all agree it is great to be better than the state, but when we think about Wakefield, our resources, our fabulous teaching staff, our, the goals that we have, we want to continue to increase that differential between us and the state to be on the higher end of that. And I think we're getting there. I think we're working, you know, I think everyone district-wide is working really hard. There's been a lot of things put in place, a lot more to go. And I think each year, we're gonna start to see even more and more growth. I highlighted a lot of the things, and I don't want to, I was trying to not be long-winded tonight because we've talked so much at other presentations. But of course, if you have questions, you can jump in. And I might differ from the curriculum coordinators depending on the question.
Melissa.
So I noticed that the fifth-grade math student growth percentile is, you know, below normal. It's 34 for both all students and high-need students. And I know that we already addressed some of the changes that fifth-grade is using in their structure to kind of address that. I know that a few years ago, one of the concerns was that the illustrative math curriculum sequence didn't line up with the MCAS expectations. Is that still the case, or is, do we change the sequencing for fifth-grade? Is that, is that what we're seeing with this low-growth percentile?
I'll let Erin jump into it. Yeah, a lot of, the part of the work that goes into the implementation, too, is in any of the programs that don't line up perfectly. So there'll be kind of decisions made around scope and sequence and what should be taught when. So there has been that work done as part of the implementation. But yeah, fifth grade is definitely an area where we're trying to just figure out the root of where we're seeing kind of consistently that drop off. I think there, you know, there's the transition, there's the teachers teaching, the two content areas being part of implementation in math. And now those teachers are part of implementation in science. Fifth grade, you know, in general, in a lot of towns, is in the elementary level. Erin addressed the scheduling concerns that we had with not enough time, particularly in ELA and math, which was resolved this year with the schedule. Erin, I don't want to speak for your content area too much. You might have other insights.
You're crushing it, Cara. Yeah, so I felt similarly that, you know, that this does highlight an area of concern. I have a lot of questions about what's happening, and I don't have a lot of answers. I think in part because I just jumped into this work, but also in part because I don't, I don't really know yet. There's a lot to look at. I do know that in terms of your question, Melissa, around I am being aligned with the standards, it's approved by DESI, and so it is aligned. And in the areas where we felt like we saw maybe a different approach than how it was being assessed on the MCAS, we're continuously looking at released questions, which they didn't release any this year, which was an interesting move. But we're continuously looking at released questions. We're looking at scope and sequence, we're looking at percentage of types of questions. We are making sure that we are kind of taking out optional lessons and putting in some reinforcement lessons. And so there's always a lot of work around making sure that the curriculum that we are using is aligning with the state's standards.
Thanks.
Thanks, Erin.
Kevin, do you have one?
Yeah, I had two comments to make. If you go to the slide that had the cohort tracking for mathematics, one thing that's kind of enlightening is you do see the drop-off to grade five, pretty much in any diagonal cohort that you look at. But then you'll, you'll see that jump to grade six, and then... And then, so, a lot of times, like, people will think, oh, this, this class of students, like, you know, like, like teachers can fall in this trap, like, oh, this class of students is really strong, and this class of students is not as strong. But if you look at the data, it definitely shows that, that there's this bounce back, you know, when they go from fifth to sixth, which is really interesting. And, you know, from a parent's perspective, it's like kind of hopeful in that.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people are like, oh, my gosh, if I'm, if my kid is behind in ELA or behind in math, like, this grade, can they ever catch up? You know, this kind of is proof that there is a catch-up factor. You see this massive jump, and not just the raw score, but also the difference between the, our scores and the state's scores. So, I also noticed grade eight seemed to be a little dropped, too, not as, not as much as five, but it's seen, except for this, except for this last year where we have a 20-point jump. But then you see a difference, you know, for 21 to 23, where the other ones seem higher. The second, I also like took a little dive in the DART districts, and for those who don't know the DART, I think you brought it out, but the DART districts are districts that are very similar to Wakefield in terms of demographics, high needs population, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think the DART districts are perfect comparisons, but they do offer different towns in the states that have very similar, you know, compare demographics, which allows good comparisons when you want to, you know, look at our scores versus of another town's scores. And when you look at our ELA, I thought it was pretty promising looking at the comparisons. Like, for three to eight, you know, our, our raw score averages a 50, you know, 53% getting needs and exceeding. And then Wilmington and North Andover were two towns that were in our DART cohort, which means those towns are, you know, supposed to be comparable to us. And we were six points above Wilmington, we were seven points above North Andover in ELA. But the same token, when you go to math, we were going, going under, you know, Wilmington by, I think, three points and six points North Andover. So, if you look at the, if you want to paint a general narrative, you know, ELA, it seems like last year, you know, performance was pretty, pretty strong, not just looking at us compared to the state, but I think it's better, it's better to look at, you know, comparing to DART districts. So, I mean, if you look at both those, both those variables, I think, you know, I think that our ELA program, you know, curriculum teaching, instruction, you know, definitely is, is strong. But definitely with math, you know, there's, there definitely, you know, is, you know, an issue around the bottom end of that difference, so.
Did you look at our DART district from last year? Is that what you were referencing?
I have not. This, so, this was, so I didn't, yeah, I did just, just looked at the difference there. I know last year I did look at it. I didn't bring that information, like, our comparison from last year to this year. And I think that, you know, maybe in a future presentation, it might be helpful to look at, you know, that'd be something to look at.
Yeah, we dug into, because anybody jumping correctly, if I'm, my understanding, the DART districts for this year will change, but we did still do, just kind of looked at who our DART districts were last year and just how we did in comparison. But even Wilmington and North Andover weren't on the list, but even still, we had similar, but similar conclusions.
Yeah.
Unless anyone has anyone else, anything else to say? You're good? Okay.
Would, can we just expand upon sort of Kevin's point there? I'm curious why we don't sort of benchmark against more similar districts as opposed to the state as a whole, because it seems like that's a, that's a more generalized.
We do. We just didn't have the information for tonight.
Okay.
Because the, the DART districts aren't released yet for us to, but we will compare. Once those come out, and, and it'll be a list of towns that, like Kevin said, are similar to us in demographic and makeup, and, and it will show, we could bring that back in another meeting. It will show where Wakefield lands in terms of comparable towns.
Sure.
But then we also look at Reading, Stona, Mount, we can't help it, we, we just do. We look and say, oh, how, how are they doing? And even though there are differences, we, we, we do dig into the information just to say.
Okay.
And that helps to shape kind of our goals, too.
Okay.
And I, oops, sorry. Sorry. But just to go ahead, but you also, when you look at the DART districts, there'll be like 10 sometimes that they show, and then you have to be, like, even, even, you can't even take that on faith. You kind of have to look at them, like Wayland was in, at least the one I clicked on, like Wayland was in ours.
I don't.
If anyone's ever been to Wayland, like, I looked at their, like, like, even if you look at the graph of all the 10 schools that were in the DART district, Wayland's like, and, and it's like, well, we're, I'm not going to do that. So, you, you do have to look.
Yeah. Last year's town, just to give people reference, last year it was Bedford, Canton, Chelmsford, Easton, Grafton, Holliston, Marshton, Milton, Pembroke, and Shoba.
Yeah.
For our DART district last year.
Yeah.
If anyone knows those towns well.
Erin, I have a question for you and maybe for a follow-up, but was this the time that we were going to maybe learn something following up from the accelerated math? And if so, have we learned anything yet, or did we not crunch those numbers yet? I couldn't remember if this was one of the metrics we were waiting for to determine how that had gone, some of the changes we had made there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know that we have, like, quite enough data to indicate that yet, especially with the change in model, but it is something that I'm closely paying attention to, and I've already started talking about this year's accelerated math experience with my seventh grade PLC. So, more information to come, and I think probably in the spring I can talk more to how we're keeping consistent with that model, but some changes that we're adjusting to make sure that we're hitting the needs of the students.
Thanks. Do you have a question?
I do.
Yeah.
Erin, nice job on your explanation for student growth percentile. We, we often get questions when percentile is high, really high, and, and then in the following year, it drops off. Can you, again, you gave a great explanation of how this, that the student growth percentile is determined, but if, if, for example, student had high growth in one year, and then maybe something that indicated what looked like low growth the following year, but they might be in the same achievement area, can you talk a little bit about that? Because sometimes that can look alarming to parents, and sometimes we get calls or the administration gets, gets calls on it, or teachers get, will get a phone call on it. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure thing. So, the growth percentile compares their last year test to the current year test, and so if they had a lot of growth the year before that pushed them kind of into a new category, and then they stay kind of within that category, the amount of growth from one year to the next won't seem as high, even though the achievement level is still high and indicative that they are learning the grade level standards that they need to and still meeting the standard. And so, it's, it's kind of common, especially for students who are higher achieving already, to see a lower amount of growth because there's just less room to grow. So, you know, it's, it's more common that we see higher levels of growth of students who are going from like personally meeting to meeting and, and things like that. So, it's just about like how much room there is to grow, especially compared to where they performed last year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I maybe had a question for Joanne. Would you mind expanding on like what the content areas of the science, technology, and engineering MCAS are? I think it's easy for me to see ELA and math. I think I'm, I'm a little mystified by.
Yeah, so, you, so within the test itself, as far as the test design, it's 25% technology and engineering questions and 75% science questions. And then within the science portion, I'm not going to remember these off the top of my head, but there is, hold on one second, let me just pull it up. It's like ecosystems is one, physical science in general as one. Let me pull up another. They're kind, they're very broad. There's four of them, and they kind of just hit a pot. There's earth and space science, physical science, I think maybe like molecules or chemistry, and then life science.
Okay. It seems like a really broad brush.
Yeah. No, they are broad. So, it's, and that's the organization of the standards as well. So, like, when you dig into the state standards, it, it has them, those, those same domains continue from year to year across all of the standards within science. So, you, there are standards within the earth science domain, and then there are standards within the physical science domain and the life science domain. And what happens is because, especially for like the grade five test, those, those standards and those domains are taught in grade three, four, and five, and it's, we have what's called an integrated curriculum. So, they're not learning like just life science in one grade and then physical science in another. They're learning standards from each one of those four domains each for three years and then being tested on those domains. So, it's one, it's one way to break it down, but it's not, there's a lot of ways to break it down.
And a, and a highlight, as you all know, just to going back to the ad of the science specialists at the elementary level was really huge, and just getting some coordinated efforts at the elementary level for teaching science on a consistent basis. So, the, we have four elementary science specialists. They, they're broken up to teach K through two and to teach three through four. So, they were part of science curriculum review, taking that K through 12 lens, hoping to get, you know, better skills developed prior to the fifth grade MCAS.
Agreed.
Kara, when did we, when did we implement that?
That's a great question. I feel like it was talked about during COVID, because I believe the last contract was settled right before COVID, and that was talked about then. So, I think then, I do not think they got, because of the hybrid model and everything, I don't think they got implemented 2021, so maybe 2122?
Thanks. Are you talking about the new science?
Yeah, the elementary science specialist.
Yeah, they started the same year I did, so.
Okay.
21, 22. But it was this slow roll, right?
Yeah.
So, we, third or fourth grade that first year, and then kindergarten, fifth grade last year.
Oh, thank you, Margaret, for that.
For two years ago.
The last couple of years are kind of a blur.
Melissa.
So, just in, in regards to the, the science performance, it looks like our, our high need students are, are performing significantly lower than the all students percentiles, but like especially in the STE area. I know that we're looking at new curriculum for science. Is that part of the, the plan to address those, those differentiations with the curriculum? Or is that like, so that there's?
Go ahead, Joanne. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think one of our, one of our driving points is to ensure that we're meeting all students where they're at and, and pushing all of, all students, right, of those who have high needs, but also our higher level students to exceed and to push themselves. And so, that's, that's a, data was a driving force that we used, we've continued to use throughout the curriculum review process. And I think Kara mentioned at the start, this concept of using high-quality instructional materials, right, with, with the concept behind it, one of the pieces of that being that they meet the needs of all students. Not to say that the first year we implement anything, right, it's going to be brand-new. And so, therefore, whatever, the whole team, teachers, students, right, myself, have a lot to learn as far as like, what does it feel like, what does it do, building out those supports. But the design is, is with especially those students, I mean, all students in mind, but we want to especially support those who have bigger needs. And the MCAS in science is going to be changing at the grade five and eight level. We're going to be piloting this year, so one, one day will be a, a new-looking assessment. And then next year, the whole state will be doing that in grades five and eight. So, that's going to change things, too. It's going to, it's significantly different looking. It's more like simulations and then animation, and you get into like a scenario that you have to solve, rather than just our multiple-choice open response current set.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, Margaret, in terms of the, the ELA score is looking extremely strong, I do remember back to where writing was a definite issue sort of in district coming out of the, the pandemic, and it's nice to see that, that level of growth and in being strong in that area. So, appreciate the, the work that went on there to make that happen.
Thank you. And something exciting, I'm not sure if Doug and Kara have shared, but the Empower writing process that we adopted was just approached by Wilson in the science of reading to be kind of the missing writing component of the science of reading, to be that science of writing component. So, we were like one of the first districts to adopt it, and now there's an approach by Wilson to be the science of writing with the science of reading, so that's really exciting for us in the district. And I think hopefully we'll continue to see that as we continue, you know, to do Empower in grades five through 12, and then hopefully maybe eventually move it to the elementary as well.
So, the Wilson reading system created our foundations program for our foundational skills. So, it's just, again, looking at that alignment piece, which has been huge. And yeah, Margaret's done the huge push five through 12 with Empower, and then Val has led the implementation of the new ELA core literacy program, EL education as well, which also focuses a lot on writing about text, kind of leveling the playing field for all students, learning about the same information, and then kind of more targeted writing along with that. So, I think we're, we're hoping to continue to see even more gains in years to come with more direction.
That's great.
Pete?
One thing that comes to mind is when we're doing our school tours, I thought it was when we were at the Walton, one of the interesting, the teachers were talking about how they were splitting subjects to try to make it easier to adopt the new curriculum. I'm just curious if any of the data we have, you know, says, I mean, maybe too early to know, but just curious if we're seeing any, you know, additional progress based on, you know, one teacher specializing in, say, math, and the other one specializing in the ELA curriculum?
That was just one pilot at, it was really teacher-directed, a, a teacher team at Walton had approached the principal and said, hey, could we try this? And, you know, I think it's a great idea, but again, it would have to be based on teacher's comfort level. I, I think it's something that would be better to come from the teachers deciding to do it on their own versus like being directed, depending on the comfort level.
Mine was more just curious, like.
Yeah, so we haven't seen how it will play out yet.
Yeah, how it would play out.
But yeah, it's just this year. It's an interesting thought to dig in like that. So, for anyone that doesn't know, one of the fourth grade teachers is teaching all ELA, and one of the teachers is teaching all math for the grade, so they're going to see how that plays out.
And I, and the thing I, that I remember from the tour was just talking about how, you know, as you're looking to adopt this new curriculum, it really helped to, to really focus on that versus have to deal with two different curriculums.
Yeah, it's a, it's definitely a lot. The elementary level, you know, the teachers are teaching all subject areas.
It's a lot.
So, we're, we're really trying to pace implementation. They've, you know, it's been a lot. The math review, ELA review, science specialists were part of the curriculum review, which are not the classroom teachers, so that was a help there, but pacing's very important in a strong implementation plan, because it's a lot.
It's a great question.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that is it from us. I have some comments to say for the end of the meeting, but that's it for right now.
Okay. I would, okay. Moving on to Chair's comments, I didn't, I didn't have a ton. I would just say, I think in terms of this time in, in the school year, I think people are really hitting their stride. It's great to see the athletics teams making such great gains. I think it's funny that we're seeing our students hitting, hitting strides in areas that are non-academic. We're seeing sports teams, theater arts, music, just everywhere else, and it's those areas that are really sort of a give-back to the community. And I, I think it's, it's just great to see sort of students taking part in, in the larger space that is Wakefield. And I know a, a lot of folks really enjoy going to some of these shows and to the sporting events, and so kind of thank you for all of the extra work that goes on beyond the arithmetic and the writing and the science within our district to, to create that sort of more full student and, and a more fuller community. So, yeah, it's great. Past that, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities. Mr. Markham.
Excuse me. Thank you. We have not met since the last meeting, but we have our next meeting a week from tomorrow. We, as, we've scheduled the meeting for November and for December, so we'll have a, a report of the next, at the next meeting.
Great. Labor and personnel. Dr. Scadell.
Thank you. We haven't met since our last meeting. However, since then, we did get a letter to Superintendent Nye from the co-presidents of Unit C of WEA, who are interested in starting to have conversations around a successor contract, so very excited about that. We are going to be meeting as a subcommittee to start some of these conversations amongst ourselves next Wednesday at 5:30 in the superintendent's office. So, we'll have more in the next few weeks certainly to share about that and look forward to commencing those conversations.
Great. Student services. Ms. Collin is unable to join us this evening, and so Ms. Quinn, do you want to speak on student services?
We have not met since our last meeting, so that, yeah, I'll speak on that.
Okay. We have, we have not met. I will, I will say that we are beginning to have conversations around, in, in that subcommittee, around student start times. I think everyone, it's not a secret, everyone kind of knows that. And so, I think something to keep on the radar is, I think we'll be looking to form some of our first community forums around that work. And so, it's something that we're actively trying to put together for our schedule, and And so just kind of keep, keep ears up and that should be along, in the not too distant future. Policy and communications, Ms. Davis.
We also have not met. I floated a handful of dates to the group earlier today. So we'll see if we can come up with a date for our next meeting.
Brilliant. Any liaison reports? Ken?
He just spoke.
Yeah.
So the environmental sustainability committee has not met since our last meeting, but they asked me to message out to the community about the pumpkin drop that is next Wednesday, November 6. And it's at noon at all the elementary schools. So I messaged, I messaged out to the building principals about that today so that they can communicate that to the community. Yep, pumpkin drop, next one, next one.
Pumpkins hopefully just free of glitter, eyeballs, paint, just, you know, organic.
Yes, that is true.
Take up candles.
Yes. Yep, those apply, but yes, thank you very much. Addition, yes, do not keep the decorations up.
Okay.
I missed the last Human Rights Commission meeting because it was during our school committee meeting due to the date change. But tomorrow night, the 30th, in the Galvin Library at 6:00 PM, there will be a local author, Jennifer De Leon, and her visit is cosponsored by the library, by the Galvin PTO and the Human Rights Commission. And she will also be coming back to the district, I believe in March, to visit with both middle school and, and high school students as well. But this is an opportunity for the community to hear what she has to speak about.
Brilliant. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Quinn?
The Youth Action Council met last week and they're moving forward with trying to find new ways to help high school students work with guidance more closely. They met with Mr. Robinson and he came to, to speak with them. So they're trying to, to find a new way to try and increase participation from both students in the guidance office with each other. And they're moving ahead with looking into municipal voting for 16 and 17 year olds.
That's great.
Yep.
I know it came up and we, we had met with the civics class at the high school and it's, we had a small discussion about how some surrounding towns are doing municipal elections, dropping the age to maybe 16 or something. Anyway, interesting topic. Anyone else?
Any update on tri board?
Well, that was, I was, yeah, I probably should have mentioned that in, in 10 is that, in the chair's comments, I'll mention it. So last night we had our annual tri board meeting where a school committee gets together with finance committee and the town council. We effectively set agenda for the year and talk about concerns, town finances, goals, things that we might be aiming towards. Dr. Lyons did a nice presentation on sort of the status of the school budget. Fincom sort of gave us an idea of what their forecast would be for town finances over the next 10 years or so. And town council had talked about some things that would be coming up in the upcoming town meeting. One, one thing that touches around us is that there'll be a, an item to be voted on to put solar panels on the Galvin School, which will be interesting to see how that turns out. But just a, a start to our normal sort of budgetary process. Finance and facilities will work to begin formalizing the budget process and then shopping around after, after the holiday season, if I'm not incorrect, Mr. Markham. Yeah. And so it was, it was overall a good meeting, fairly brief, not a lot of questions, so pretty straightforward. Would you, would you say that encapsulates?
I think that's great, good summary.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Brilliant. Future dates and agendas, go ahead.
I just wanted, I can, I can wait till you're done, I just had one comment.
Yes.
Go ahead, please. I, I just feel like I would be remiss if I didn't share that over the weekend, we, we were, someone, someone let us know that Dr. Sullivan, Joe Sullivan, passed away. And so many of us here, this is my 10th year here in Wakefield. And from the minute I arrived here, Dr. Sullivan, who was then the principal of St. Joe's, you know, kind of reached out to me and he had retired as an administrator from the high school here and he was terrific. I, I kind of hit it right off with him. I loved Joe, right? And so I appreciated him referring to me as youngster. And, and our deepest condolences go out to his family and to his grandchildren, many of whom are in our school system now. But I feel like we just needed to, to let both the school committee know and, and our viewing public know as well.
Thank you.
So thank you for the time for that.
Thank you. Future dates and agendas. Our next school committee meeting will be November 12. We will, we'll be talking about MTSS and intervention, a curriculum update on the writing program and a technology update.
We'll also be talking about.
That's all on the agenda for next time?
No, it's just future, future dates and agendas. That'd be a lot.
Give Kara a heart attack.
School committee comments. Ken?
Just three really quick things. First, the pumpkin decorating or the pumpkin covering is, is one of the best events, I think. And I got there a little later than normal. I tried to bring my nephews and usually it's before a tri board meeting or a school committee meeting, so we're running it, it's still kind of light out. This time got to go when it was dark and it were people there for, for a really long time. I mean, it's just a wonderful event and I'm really appreciative of the teachers that make it happen and certainly the students who share their talents with the town, picking out your favorite ones. So it was a great event. Number two was I saw all, most of you were at the high school speaking with the class about civics. And I was lucky the week before to have it all to myself. I got to be here and have center stage, not having to share it with any of you. It was really wonderful. It was, it was such a great opportunity and I really appreciate Erin and her colleagues who invite us in every year to participate and certainly would welcome other opportunities if they were ever other opportunities for other ways to kind of get involved or things like that. Because to see the students and get to, get to talk and answer questions and kind of see the faculty in, in action is just really exciting. So I really appreciated that. And then lastly, Doug had mentioned Mr. Sullivan. For anyone who was, grew up here in Wakefield, went through Wakefield High, from the late 70s to the mid 90s, covering lots of generations of students, he was just an icon and could keep you up talking about his approaches, which were just amazing. He was dubbed the warden for a reason. But he was just a great educator who really cared for, for those that were here in his very unique brand of doing so. But had a very long career in a couple of the districts, Gloucester, and of course here at St. Joe's. So for him and for his family and for the generations of students that, that got to work with him, he was, he was a great guy and is going to be definitely missed. You know, worked up until basically his passing at St. Joe's. So I didn't realize he'd been there for 16 years at St. Joe's. So a very long time, great educator and will definitely be missed. So thanks for, for bringing that up, Doug. That's it.
Thank you. Pete?
Kevin, still half my thunder, but I'll, I'll maybe start with the other part of it. So we've been busy with our school tours, which is one of my favorite things to do as a school committee member. I've been joined by some other school committee members. We've been joined by some of our town counselors, some of our administrative staff. And it's just really enjoyable to see all the hard work going on in all the buildings from our staff, from our administrators, seeing kids and how their day is going about. So I, I really enjoy that and I know Kara's been working hard to coordinate those visits. And I'll echo what Kevin said. I was not here for the solo visit because we were told to come to the, to the big visit. But we were joined by our town administrator. We were joined by, I think everyone from the school committee came. And, you know, we, we joined with two big classes of juniors working on their civics projects. And they were definitely very shy, they did not want to speak up. But I did have one, I recognized a lot of them from, from other activities at the school. But one did come up to me later on and he was really excited to tell me that he and another student, their project was open campus, which is something that I fondly remember during my high school times, being able to leave at lunchtime, being able to leave if I had a free period at the end of the day. And he was, he was telling me how excited he was that they were coming back. I think it was either yesterday or on Friday in their suits to give their presentation to, to Ms. McLeod or whoever it was to talk about, talk about open campus. And I know they mentioned we'd be invited back later in the year, maybe to hear some of their, some of their.
You might be hearing sooner than that, sooner than that, right? Because they did do a great job and I think there'll be some information reported to school committee probably in our meeting after next. But the students did a great job, great job pitching their, their ideas to Mrs. McLeod.
And, and thanks to, to Ms. Chris House and forget the other teachers' names, but for coordinating that.
Caitlin Torelli.
Okay, and as Kevin said, I mean, I always, any opportunity to come and visit with our staff and see students, I try to, to take advantage of any of those that I can fit in my schedule.
I think the teachers genuinely get a kick out of this, this notion of how quiet their students all of a sudden become. And I don't know if they would describe them necessarily as shy, Pete? But it is interesting how they become quiet and there are different prompts to try to engage them. But they, yeah, they did a great job, teachers did a great job and thank you so much for coming. It's greatly appreciated.
Brilliant. I think open campus would be a boon for the Uber industry in Wakefield, just shooting off the cravings for the afternoon. That's great. Any, any other comments? Okay. That being said, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yes, motion to adjourn, oh, sorry, move of the school committee adjournments meeting Tuesday, October?
29th.
29th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks.